But they are on site and it's only a matter of time before they're going to cause an accident. It's only a matter of time. Or fire not getting through, whatever, who knows what's going on. And there's a bunch of them that are really closely over by the school by Meadowland Sacred Heart. They're up and down Lena, up and down maybe you see a bunch on the Palahondra. So I mean, there's a bunch of them, I get those neighbors just, you know, kids are parking everywhere so that maybe us kind of go to the schools. You guys can get your.
Yeah, Lena, Lena is one of the good examples of this overflow parking issue. Because one of the techniques of lowering your count at the school is to literally park off-site. But when you put a lot of pressure on making sure to have this go on, you put a lot of squeeze on the neighborhood to receive cars, right? You know, so.
Agreed.
All right, anything else then? Anything else on that horizon? All right, all right, good. And then the top of the side, I'm on the other end. Have a motion to return moved and seconded, all those papers say aye, aye. In that time period in the town, do we have any idea?
Three hundred, yeah, three hundred and fifty new residences were filed between June two thousand twelve and June two thousand nineteen. So this was January, but that was the report that we were in January. So within a three-year timeframe, six months passed.
So seventeen, seventeen did not make that timeframe and thirty, and three hundred and fifty did, or how?
Uh, no, the seventeen are total since two thousand and six. That would be, that seventeen would need to be relative to the number of total homes since two thousand and six were filed. So presumably that's. Since instituted the ordinance, so that number.
And the three hundred and fifty was since two thousand sixteen?
Uh, the three hundred and fifty was sent, was between a three-year timeframe of June two thousand twelve and June two thousand nineteen. Just to paint a perspective of how many homes were filed in a three-year timeframe relative to.
Similar period, just six months later.
The date, correct.
And anybody in that seventeen have issues with PG&E authorizations?
Uh, I would presume so, that seems to be the industry standard of foreseeing PG&E delays and that's factored into the construction.
Okay.
Yeah, the PG&E delays.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
It's difficult, waiting for your issues with bankruptcy. I got contractors.
Go ahead, for the record, go ahead.
My name is Mike Reilly, Billy Fishworth, I am. So with PG&E, yeah, the issues, it's very common from six months late up to eighteen months if not more. A lot of that's due with contractor schedule with PG&E, and of course PG&E is slow to respond. But the time when this permit was issued, January twenty sixteen, there was five other ones that were issued, similar size, ten thousand to sixteen thousand square feet that finished within the construction time limit. And there were the rain delays and everything, but PG&E is an ongoing issue, I mean, it's, it's not, nothing new. Okay, that's nothing to do with their bankruptcy, it's just the way PG&E operates.
Yes.
It's just that operation.
Correct. And you're saying maybe the contractor should factor in those delays when they're.
Yeah, once, sure, yeah, so once, once the contractor get out of the ground and then they can submit reengineering through PG&E. So a lot of it is scheduling, but even, we got, you know, a couple contractors, they get it scheduled way in advance and they're still eighteen months. Eighteen months out. So it just depends mainly on this, some of these, with the ones taking eighteen months, if we're talking twelve hundred act services, we're talking commercial side of service, right? I'm not sure what, two out of that is maybe six hundred and eighty, but, so yeah, so it's, it's not, anybody's, it's not the contractor's control for us PG&E, but they're still able to get it done. I mean, this is the first one actually I see where PG&E was on an appeal. A lot of them due will give me an appeal when they submit the thirty thousand, I review it, and actually I'll deny it. And then they don't even take it to this level, right?
On your comments regarding PG&E that you submitted to staff, one thing I had a question on was, you said PG&E connected the gas and electric on March two thousand nineteen, and building department approved and released the gas and electric tags January fifteen, two thousand nineteen. So could you explain the significance?
So that would be, so when we do that, that's on the private side. So when you get on the PG&E side, which would be anything from the, from the, let's say the gas line out in the street to the needle location, that's geared to PG&E. So everything that we looked at, we tagged was acceptable and we were able to tag it. So for gas pressure release of tag, they pass the pressure test, we release it, they then give the release to PG&E, and PG&E can start coming out and doing the hookup.
So my question is the significance of the dates, did you put those down because they're both after?
Now, I put those down because that's what was signed off and are tracked by our inspector.
I think he's asking, I mean, are you asking about why the delay from April, from March table, is that what you're asking about?
Well, it says you approved to release the gas line, you released them on January fifteenth, that was still after the deadline, right? I mean, aren't we talking January?
Yeah, yeah. So that's after the July first, so.
I think before that, you might even, I don't know, would we did the underground for it, I didn't go back from the records.
And then, and then the, I'm just trying to find the significance of the statement too, that the owner stated that PG&E connected their gas and electric in March two thousand nineteen, which is two months late.
Later, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Any other questions? I want to make sure the advocate gets up here, we always come back to you, it's where the South. All right, so let's go ahead and then I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and we'll start with the advocate. I'll mute her up.
Good evening, thanks for having us today. So I really want you to understand that you're saying there's so many homes that have been completed in time versus ours. PG&E is a known issue, I agree. That's why we started contacting PG&E in two thousand seventeen, two years ago. And we talked to them, submitted implication in September two thousand seventeen, which is more than, I don't know how many months ago. And it took them a year to get back to us. And during that period of time, the accounting, account managers changed again and again. So in two thousand, I don't know, eighteen, in October two thousand eighteen, that was when they started to schedule the inspections, also construction. It took them a year to actually just generate the contract. The reason I put it here is this really is beyond our control, I can understand PG&E can be delayed, can delay the project for six months, for a year, but I didn't know that it would be to this extent. And in October two thousand eighteen, so I contacted them again, I listed in one of my supporting documents, you will see that I listed all the dates and how they delayed everything from, even just to, they said, oh, there's a small revision that we have to make in the contract, so we're going to give it to you in a couple of days. It took them about forty days to give that to me. So I, I mean, I was in constant contact with them, so eventually they said, okay, we will schedule your, your construction, but Mike didn't say that, you know, it's ongoing thing, it has nothing to do with PG&E, it's bankruptcy. But in our case, there is, because they said, well, we're waiting for Atherton, Town of Atherton to issue us the perp, encouragement permits that we can proceed. So I contacted Town of Atherton, it turned out they did not pay. So I went back to PG.
They who, they didn't?
PG&E did not pay, because if they don't send you, send you the payment, you will not give them the permit.
So that's, that triggers the accident.
Right, they did not pay, and PG&E, I have, it's in the email documentation for the PG&Es to tell me, due to the bankruptcy process, they cut the check and they gave it to PG, but they never sent it out to you because of the bankruptcy issue, everything was actually, there's a freeze on all the checks issued. And this actually happened twice, not only for our electricity, but also for gas, and everything is documented here. So our, and they didn't even inform us it was scheduled and no one came, no one showed up. So I had to call PG&E and it took them many days to find out and told me, you know, the check was even sent to Town of Atherton because of the bankruptcy chaos they had. So we rescheduled the construction date again and again, and that's why it was late until March. Even though Mike issued our, gave us the tax in January, but it is irrelevant in this case. Because even with the tax that we have, there's nothing PG&E would have done until March. It's not just a regular delay, it is really the bankruptcies. And I talked to Helen, her last name is L U O, yeah, from your office as well, she, if you talked to her, you would have known, she's in contact with PG&E, talking about checks here and there, just the checks was not even there. And eventually PG&E had to, because of the fight we put in, PG&E had to move someone else's check to our account so that we can get permit from Town of Atherton to make our construction happen. That's what really happened, that's how much fire we put in to proceed with this construction. It is such a struggle that, you know, as a homeowner, we made every decision, I mean, design decision as soon as we can so that we don't delay anything, and we feel so appreciative that our neighbors are so understanding and patient with what has to go on. But the PG&E thing, you know, is, I, I really lost sleep at night, every night. And I, I actually told them that I had to sue them for what they've done to me.
To ask you a question, is this whole, is your whole delay thing about PG&E, or is there others, do you want to say other things to it?
There are other things as well, but.
You should jump to the other things as well.
Okay.
We got the PG&E thing.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Everybody got the PG&E.
Yeah, so there are other things you highlighted, so the PG&E, we got a PG&E, what belong, what are, what are the other items?
Well, there are other items that are, the heavy rains for the last three years, the rains are unusually heavy than the previous years. And I actually totaled, yeah, so I totaled the days and the stage of the construction when there was a heavy rain that caused the delay. I believe you have that page, should we repeat that, or just give us?
No, the idea is, so how many days did that cause the problem, so, so.
Okay.
One thing is the contractor mistake that caused the mold issue, which is, that's, that's, that's on you for choosing that contractor. So sue them. So when you choose a contractor, they don't do a good job, that's within the purview of whoever's running the project. All right, so that's one, that's one. And then the rain, the rain was exacerbated that. What other items we see as PG&E and, and the rain delayed the project? And it's not even done, I drove by it the other day and I was amazed, it doesn't even close to be, doesn't even look close to being done.
For the moving construction?
Yeah.
We moved in already?
Well, yeah.
It just, the outside, it hasn't been.
Well, the backyard was all open and there was a bunch of stuff stacked back there and everything, so there's a lot of stuff that's still, there were guys moving temporary fences around when I was there, and so there's still a long, a long way to go. And there's a lot of stacked up construction stuff on the back.
Right.
Secondary unit.
Well, I don't know what's, how you define on beyond my control, I mean, as a homeowner, I really don't have much control. Too bad for me, I mean, if the contractors or the subcontractors are.
So the two items that, that caused the delay are PG&E and the rain and the.
Yes.
That, is there any others?
No.
Okay, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So you were building this for your own home, so you moved in?
Right.
That's not a spec.
No.
Had you built a house before?
Well, smaller ones.
Okay, but nothing this size?
No, 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 no.
Before, this is ten thousand, what before?
Two thousand something.
Okay, and then ZY, is that you, or is that?
ZV.
I'm sorry.
ZV Construction?
Yep, ZV.
Yeah, so the contractor's here as well.
ZV's here.
Yeah.
And how many homes has ZV built in Atherton?
Three.
How many?
Three.
Go ahead, wait, wait till he comes up.
Well, I will, but, but, okay, so you hired him based on, is it theirs included in the three, or is it two plus there?
Uh, it's two plus there and half one more.
Okay, all right, so you knew about the three-year.
Yes.
Okay, so you knew about it, right? And you, you signed up for that, right? Like we all, I'm all about it. I was on, I've been on, my name is Michelle, this will be my third time. I was actually on the general plan in two thousand and six, when we actually created the thirty-six months. I actually argued that it should be twenty-four months because I thought it was completely irresponsible for people to, to impact their neighbors for longer than that amount of time. Okay, but, but so, I'm saying, from my standpoint, I'm asking the question.
Yeah, ask a question.
Did they, you had never built anything that was ten thousand, two thousand feet, and you, this is your third house?
In Athens.
In Athens, of this size?
Of this size.
Okay.
All right, all right, so any other questions? Any other comments? All right, the important thing is, we're trying to understand what the facts are from your perspective, all right? We got the document that says, okay, there are two items, there are two issues. We have clarification, more clarification now on the PG&E aspect of it. And it doesn't sound like we need, we, it doesn't seem like we have a lot more clarification on the, on the water issue other than what you, what you report, which is, which thoroughly covers it. So all I wanted to do was make sure any other items that we need to know about that caused the delay. When was the, when, I forgot the date, what was the date on the water issue?
It was Janu, it was early January two thousand nineteen, it was when it was, was the final stage of the project.
So how did that delay the project? January eighteen of the eighteen?
Oh, I'm sorry, January nineteen, January two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so the water damage was January two thousand nineteen?
Right.
That was when your due date was anyway? So it would have been after your due date that that happened, so that didn't delay the project? It delayed, how long took to fix, it delayed the January evil aspect of the project, but it didn't delay the project as of your due date? The only thing that you're saying is a factor on the, on the due date is PG&E?
Right.
Okay, all right, that's, that's what I needed to know. All right, is there, is there anything else then?
That's it.
Okay, good, you go ahead, I need you to introduce yourself so that you're on the record.
My name is Zach, I'm the owner for ZV Construction, the contractor is giving a phone call me, just my height. So she has pretty much captured all of the nine and four delay, there's a PG&E delay, she explained pretty well, and also the weather. I think in this three years, the timing of our project is, is unfortunately falls with all the rain here that we have. For example, the rain, when it was heavy, we were doing the excavation for basement, when it was heavy, we were trying to trenching for utilities. So I totally agree with you, for three years, I should not have heard of it in the other cities. Most of my projects are, are hard, which is the issue, all three years.
All right.
But of course, most of our projects, I was speaking of the dollars, most of our supplies is dollars, so three years, it is very generous.
So at one and a half years, how did you adjust the plan to meet, to meet the due date?
I'm sorry.
At one and a half years into the project, how did you adjust the plan to meet the three-year date?
Well, we tried to hurry as much as we can, trying to, you know, cascade the work, self-com to benefit our timeline. Of course, they end, the PG&E already caused for a wrench in the whole plan because they were just not coming out. And they will not tell us that they will not come out until the last minute.
So how did the PG&E's delay cause a problem on the rest of the project?
For example, you know, as we're trying to finish our house, we were making system with the test, there's the storm and everything. So we had to wait until it come out through all these testing for fire marshal inspection, for fire inspections. So until the data they connected us, took us another two months to finish it.
Two months, and what's the date on that? What I'm trying to figure out is, when did you know you weren't going to hit the date?
I'll say the last six months of the project. It was getting towards one, I would know that, oh, this is, there's a lot of work, we were trying, we were trying to get her into the house for Christmas. You know, and there had a lot of rains that caused us to slow down and to come work. So I think May has probably about the basis, finding, there's this place of business, not in the weekends. So those are days like this, you know, of course, the grounds, so for us, for trenching work, for, and during the time of backfilling, there was a pandemic. There was time that was raining during the weekday, in the weekend, but in the weekend.
Yeah, okay, any other questions? Just wondering quick, in addition to the four reasons that are being presented here tonight, with the rain, subcontractor delays, the leakage of the mold, PG&E, were there any like internal design decisions or design changes that also led to the delay?
She actually has done a pretty good job. This is not the first time a few homes that are on, or a contractor, but she actually has done half a dozen problems in this one. So it's not her first rodeo, so when it comes to design, tiles, she got it done, it was not much of a need, you know, her decision was crucial. So I cannot say that she has not, you know, caused any delay, there's always decisions you make, but not.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, thank you. So is there anyone else here, we're on, for those of you who can, we're on item four D, four C has been removed from the agenda, but we can, if you're here to speak on four C, we're on invited to speak, but we're on item four D right now, I'm too out of way. All right, and I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, if there are not anyone else to speak on side, all right, good, there is.
Christopher Boda, he lived in thirty-five Adamway. And sent an email.
Yep.
I got that from the government. And I just wanted to verbally confirm that, yeah, we've been putting up with this for many, many months.
Yeah.
It has been fine, they, they, they're working a lot, the street has been, blocked, a little delayed for quite a few minutes.
Locked on, I got that.
They had excavation going on there, and I see many, typical, I'm not familiar with exactly what's going on, but they have a whole one, it's locked, and there are people working on it all the time. We've got similar situations, and they've also come up with this timeline. And I don't like that, it's the rule, why not follow it? I don't think there's any, many of these circumstances that give me point to a different choice.
So I have a couple of questions for you, how long you lived on Adamway?
I lived there in nineteen eighty.
Okay, so considerable amount of time. I walk this street quite a bit and I've noticed eighty percent of the homes are new on that street, at least. Over the years, so, over the last twenty years, the whole street's been nearly rebuilt.
A lot of one-story homes.
Yeah, right, exactly, so.
I have that impression also in the county.
My question to you, being a resident there for so long, and you may not know the answer to this, say over the last, since that street has been rebuilt, have there been any other projects that have exceeded the time delay since, say, two thousand and six when it was instituted?
We got a notice for the one on Hamilton Drive behind us, and we haven't had a notice for any other.
Okay, all right, okay, just going just from your member houses here.
How they determine who gets the notice or not? We're about three houses away from this project, and one house away from Hamilton Drive.
Okay.
Four or five or six houses away from this panel.
All property owners within five hundred feet of a subject site are getting the notice. Five hundred feet boundary outside of the outer boundaries of the subject site.
That's it, all right, great, all right, thank you, thank you for coming in, thank you. All right, anyone else here to speak on the side of? All right, then I'll go ahead and close the hearing and bring it back for discussion.
I have a couple, I have a little more question, a couple more questions for you. How about, maybe I just want to go for future reference, this, this whole PG&E thing, did anybody else have an issue with tech, with names during this period of time?
No, she said yes, there was issues with PG&E, because I remember our project on Middlefield for the gas line, that was the way with PG&E because of the checks, they were cutting checks. As far as other, I, I don't, I don't know, but that was an issue.
Okay.
Was the checks on for PG&E.
Okay.
Yeah.
And one hand, they're, they're just having that process to get scheduled, is that what the deal is, they're just over.
It's a long process, it really is, I said, there are delays, like for six months to eighteen months. Has it affected any construction time limits? Not that I'm aware of, if it did, it was never brought up as a subject for an appeal of PG&E.
And so the total delay on this one was about, was within that eighteen month time, within that eighteen month window then?
What for PG&E?
Yeah.
I think so.
All right, okay. All right, all right, that's all I had, I just wanted to make sure I understood the overall was, I wanted to see how irregular this was and it doesn't sound like.
It's ongoing, but she is correct, there was a time, like when the bankruptcy was starting, that they weren't cutting checks.
And how much of the delay would that have made to our?
I'm not sure exactly, I'm not sure exactly what the long delay was, I know it was probably from like for the middle of the, I think it was three weeks.
Okay.
So another add on that, I'm not sure, I don't know of any other contractors that had that same problem, it could have, I'm not aware of it.
What's the, what, if it was three weeks, how much, how much difference that make to the penalty?
Three weeks. Yeah, I'll do it now.
Okay, all right, all right.
Exactly.
All right.
I have to go, if you want.
All right, yeah, I want to, let me, let me, here's, I had some thoughts on this one, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not buying the rain issue at all, okay, this, fly out, not, everybody's got the same issue. And it's, you know, within a two-year, two-year time period, and this, this time period is about being a good neighbor, all right? I, you know, in my own neighborhood, the person behind us rebuilt their house, the person next door right now is building a mega mansion. And so that should be, you know, when you're building a new development, there's nobody there, and you just go through and mow it down. When you do any infill projects like these are, it's a disruption to the neighborhood. So the time limit is about incentivizing the time limit on disruption. And since nobody's got together and saying, let's do it all six for our house at the same time, that disruption house is a cascade of disruptions that continues on in a community like this. So we're more strict about the timelines, we're strict about the timelines because it makes a difference to the style of people's lives. And, and that's part of the reason people came to this property, these properties was to have quite peaceful life with space. And when I drove by the, the site the other day, with the truck out in the middle, and there's a bunch of guys running around with fences, the side yard was all exposed with a bunch of trash, and it looked like a, at that construction site, it was.
Let me respond to that one.
Yeah.
So there is four permits that were issued, or two that were issued and two didn't really be issued in two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
That were construction still going on there, they got the gates, got a pool.
Yeah.
They're going to have a gazebo.
Yeah, so that's going to be four years, five, four and a half. All right, so all I'm, all I'm saying is that every, every project has extenuating circumstances, that's part of, that's part of the management. Three years is a long time to build a home, even an eleven thousand square foot, three years is, I mean, you know, you could build a skyscraper in that amount of time. So I don't know what other techniques could have been brought in, more people, more simultaneous work, other, you know, which would increase costs one way or the other. So by not having twelve people rather than six, or whatever number staff was, it costs time. And that would have cost you more money then. And being late on the project is disruptive to the neighbors, and that's what the fine is about. It's about making sure that there's a reason not to be late. And so I'm, I'm okay with, uh, with approving, uh, the, or reinforcing the, the, uh, the, the decision to go ahead with the fine.
I have a comment on this too. I think the point that hasn't been brought out here is that we understand their delays were real. We understand there's a person, not person, an entity that caused it, mainly PG&E and perhaps something about the weather. But they are asking us to take the loss for something we didn't cause, we being this town of Atherton. We have a fee to help all the other neighbors and be a disincentive to future problems. And it seems to me that if the homeowner has a beef and a blame, which she certainly does, it should be laid at the fee to the people who caused it, not at us. We should charge our fee, and you should ask uh, compensation from those who caused it. That's what happens in courts of law. So I, I agree with Eric. I think the fee should stand and let them go to whoever was their villain and collect a, a compensation for it.
Yeah, I am willing to go along with the staff recommendation. I appreciate the comments from the building department, and I think, um, all the comments regarding the issues were, in my opinion, spot on, and it's hard to ignore that. Like Stephanie said, three hundred and fifty projects in roughly the same time period, uh, were completed within three years. Let alone your comment about what you're able to build in three years, but, uh, three hundred and fifty other projects, that's really hard to ignore. So I think the proof is, is kind of right there.
So I, I'm on the deny side too. If you give the staff report, you suggest it, I'm generally gonna follow it, as you know, whether it's denying it, whether it's supporting. This wasn't a PG&E issue. This was a planning issue on the contractor's part and on the owner's part, because the house probably wasn't ready anyway, even if PG&E come out, PG&E came out six months earlier. Right? PG&E, there's a process. You heard me. Um, whether there were payments made or not made, every building, all over the main area, it deals with PG&E, including us, on our commercial, on our residential, on our industrial, everything. You know that's one of the early things you have to get on top of. Period. So at the end of the day, there, there is no reason for a house like this unless there were changes made, or unless they were choosing to, to put resources on other projects, whatever it was for a house this size to be longer than twenty-four months. That's, that, we're doing, we, I know because we do. And so for this to go thirty-six and not even be done, I would buy today. There is, that is one thing I want to talk about at a future meeting is, when is that thirty-six months? Does that include the house? Does that include landscape? Perfect example, just like forty-six all draw, like Ralston, the exact same thing. We, we may need to bring that back down even further to say, look, you're on, you're off, here's the time limit.
And you might agree if I'm wrong, that three-year time limit is based on permit. So.
Issue.
Permit issuance. So a permit can be, you can have multiple permits issued for one property, like the main residence, or the guest house, the pool house, et cetera, et cetera. Those permits may be issued on a different time, so you can be in residence first, and then set up something on the outbuildings, for example.
Right.
That's not abnormal throughout town.
Yeah, so that, so we ought to, we ought to think about that separately, because, because that, if you were doing a project, like a school or whatever, you'd be planning out all the buildings, and you'd be approving the position of the buildings, and the permits would be for the whole project. And because the whole project is a disruption to the neighborhood, so we have, and given the size of the projects that we've seen recently, it may be the time to really look at that as a, you know, this project is gonna be done so that neighbors can go back to working their, living in their backyards, uh, quietly. And I, and I know I'm having more experience with that than ever lately, so, so, uh, yeah. All right, so I need a motion. I'll move, I'll move that the fine commission, I, the appeal and the delays to construct a project at, at two Adamway. Uh, we're not outside control yet. Second, would be seconded. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right, so the, the question's that. And the appeal process would be, how many days do they have to do the appeal?
Ten-day right of appeal.
To.
Data. In writing, application submitted. And I, I, we talked about that briefly, and we can discuss the process.
Yeah, so just for the record, to say it.
Ten-day right of appeal. Appeal would be to the city council, appealing the decision of the planning commission. Ten days from today, and writing up an application associated with these materials.
All right, thank you. And sorry the project didn't go the way you wanted it to. All right, uh, item number five is, is commissioner's report. Any, any reports? Nothing? Thank you, thank you for ten.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, all right, item, so nothing under item five, so item number six, staff report.
You, uh, first, I want to introduce a new face here at the table. Uh, Jay Garcia has joined the planning department as the town's new assistant planner. I'll let him give his, uh, two-sentence bio on this background and planning, and we're, we're happy to have him on board as we'll be seeing him at future meetings.
Hi, nice to meet you all. Um, it's a pleasure to be here. I've enjoyed my time so far. Um, a little bit about myself, I'm originally from Southern California. I've been working in natural land management, uh, related, uh, work, environmental regulation, and, uh, I'm currently a student at San Jose State, uh, in the master's program.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Yeah. Eric, uh, you just have to keep it down on the next meeting, it's a little bit. All right, what else?
Uh, we, um, have a few, well, we have one new commissioner who will be coming, uh, on board from July. Uh, Joanne has turned out. She did not seek reappointment. Tonight would have been her last meeting, but unfortunately she was unable to attend. So, uh, there were two open spots. Those of those spots have been filled and appointed by the council last week. One of them, uh, Mr. Randy Lamb.
Thank you.
Boy, that was so close too. I think they had to take it both three times, didn't they?
Uh, and our second new commissioner, uh, his name is Harry, um, Neroncik, and he has served on the Parks and Recreation Commission since two thousand and fifteen. He has since turned out and, uh, was appointed to join the planning commission. There was a total of four applicants, no, five, excuse me, five total applications.
Yes, so, I mean, people really like those same ingredients. All right, um. Right, good. Anything else?
I know. We do have a meeting scheduled in July with items that are already, um, scheduled to be on the agenda. And that date to be have here is.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth of July.
Yeah.
So we will, if, um, they're not in this room, things are a bit fluid right now, uh, just in terms of already spaces that are already shut, we'll give you advanced notice. If the meeting won't be here, it could potentially be either in the main house or the carriage house, but would be here within Holbert Park.
I asked you a question. Were you guys down on your staff report?
Well, look, I've, I've asked you one more thing about the staff report. Uh, is there anything on our, on our, uh, upcoming, uh, meeting agendas that are big league, uh, you know, general plans or anything else? I mean, I'm, so I wanted a little bit of a, what's happening.
Sure.
During, now and fall type thing.
Uh, what we have identified, um, thus far through the duration of the summer, um, beyond any specific application that may come in, uh, we have, uh, there was a gentleman who came two meetings prior, and if you recall, spoke during public comment on items not on the agenda, the topic of, uh, landscape screening requirements within the front, uh, properties. Uh, and so I will be bringing a report back to the commission in July. Uh, the general plan, you would not be seeing again, uh, that is continuing through the discussion processes with the city council. So I'll provide you updates, um, as they become available. Uh, we did go as an informal study session to the city council last week. They had some comments and questions primarily related to the circulation element. Uh, the townwide draft traffic study won't be going to the planning commission, excuse me, to the city council at their next meeting, so that may, um, answer some of those questions. Uh, the commission, or excuse me, the council may want to take a step further back and really evaluate some of the new goals, policies, and objectives that were derived from other adopted town documents and assessed in current times.
Yeah. Maybe I, maybe I've been out of town for the last month. Um, what was the final, what's the current status on tree ordinance?
So the city council appointed an ad hoc subcommittee of two members to work with staff, um, to get in in, in more depth and detail on some of the language and implementation and regulatory components of that. So we, as staff, are working internally with that ad hoc subcommittee, and ultimately, the, any revised draft ordinance, we need to go back to the council. Um, I think it will go back first as another discussion item, perhaps not, uh, like a request for any formal action that would happen after further discussion is brought forth to the council, reporting back on whatever the subcommittee actions or direction is.
Okay. All right, that's all.
I actually have two things back to staff, so to, 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 I mean, to the commission reports. Um, that we could add at some future point when we have time, the, the conversation we had today, on how, we, we have a huge loophole that I don't think most of these contractors realize. And I don't, I think we should probably shut it down before that gets to that point, which is what's, what's appropriate with a thirty-six month timeline though, and what other structures are there, because like, like you're hearing back here, then, um, this gentleman spoke, you can say, hey, you know what, I'm getting my thirty-six months and eighteen months, and I want to build an accessory structure. That's gonna go eighteen plus eighteen.
Right.
And then I'm gonna do my landscape. I mean, these poor guys could be sitting next to this for five or six years. I don't know how you control that legitimately for these neighbors, but I mean, it shouldn't be to take close to thirty-six months to build all these houses. Unless, I mean, my guess. And then the other one is what I emailed you. I emailed Stephanie about, of this rowing issue that I see in the White especially season around Atherton, of rocks and, and trees and, uh, trunks thrown all over the frontages of people's yards, all over Atherton. And I took a whole bunch of pictures of that, sort of. I mean, big rocks, little rocks, it's like, you know.
So that's, that is not allowed in the right of way.
Exactly.
It is a hazard. It is currently not allowed.
Right.
Uh, we are complaint-based in this town, so to be extended, you see, and we like to talk with Monica. Uh, it is a great town, so you can send.
You guys have probably seen it, they're everywhere there. Now you have, you had a clarification, right, on that, which was?
Uh, so there was two components, and both components I want to follow up directly, both with knowing officials that stepped out and the health and works director. I know neither anything within the right of way would require a code requirement unless otherwise exact within the municipal code, so I want to just affirm all of that, based on the details that you provided. And then second, the second part was construction vehicles on property A that made the park in front of their neighbor's house, um, or left it, or right across the street, wherever that could be. Uh, so every permit that's issued for new construction has to have a construction operation plan, C O P, they call it. Uh, a standard template approval of those C O Ps prohibits construction vehicles from parking outside of the property's boundaries and/or frontage in front of their own house. So if construction vehicles are parking on in front of their neighbor's house, as, uh, as the city attorney mentioned, that would be a code enforcement-related type issue, so if there are specific addresses, uh, please provide those to us, and we will have certain rights to them. Yeah, good.
So is most of it being, uh, parking obstruction, is that?
Right.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay.
So, so the two things about that, one is, uh, why is it happening more? Is there some issue there that's causing it?
I think because once they put them out, they do, they, they just forget about it, and they kind of, they kind of disappear, and they go, okay, but they, everybody else has to deal with it.
And you mean more often?
Yeah, I mean, is there, is there a specific thing? So I'm saying, just somebody wake up and say, I just want to, I want to decorate the front of my house with these logs. Where do they say, you know, trucks are keeping on, keeping on, uh, parking in front of here, and it's annoying. So I'm trying to get, what's the instigator of the effect? So some, will you just go and hammer everybody for the, uh, the alcohol that they're doing? Or found out what's causing them to take the action? And there might be two, uh, two sides to it.
I was like, you see that? I mean, oh, that's a great idea.
That's exactly it, totally.
Might just see my idea.
And then, then you do the, as a preventive measure, before anything happens.
But, you know, Monica's had really, she's only been here a couple of years, and we really not had as many code enforcement resources now, and we're starting to see, she's more bandwidth, started forcing these things, and we're actually responding, so it could be a simple matter.
There are only so many houses in Atherton. She, she, and she's driving probably past a third of them every week, and then going somewhere. This is one where maybe it's just a blanket, hey, just take the, the dress down, because none of us have time to go running around town. Rock, please.
Can we go first? Anyone else who wants to speak on the item would be up next, and then we close the public hearing and bring it back for the commission for action and, uh, for discussion and action as appropriate. That's, uh, that's, as everybody knows the rules. All right, uh, go ahead on item four B, heritage tree removal permit at one sixty-eight Elena Avenue. Go over the staff report.
Thank you, Chair. So the request before you tonight is the removal of one heritage tree, a eighteen-inch diameter cedar tree that is located along the front entry wall of the flag lot, uh, at one sixty-eight Elena. The basis of the tree removal request is associated with the installation of a proposed PG&E gas meter, um, in close proximity to the tree, along the front entry wall. Um, in order for that installation, uh, to occur, the tree would need to be removed so that the, its roots in the future would not interfere with the installed meter. Uh, alternative, uh, locations that were assessed to also be viable, uh, were evaluated to see about preserving the tree. Uh, the other viable location that was identified would be a hundred and fifteen feet back from the driveway spot, uh, driveway entry, I should say, uh, the beginning of the flag piece, and would be located between other existing heritage trees, both cedar trees as well as oak tree and, and oak tree. Uh, and, uh, not the preferred location based on, again, on root impacts that would occur to the, specifically, more specifically, to the heritage oak tree that would be in proximity to that other alternative location. Uh, the, uh, proposed plans also do include a substantive replanting plan. Um, the specifics of both the types, quantities and sizes of the trees are noted in the staff report. But of, um, I think most, um, relevant is the two forty-eight inch oak trees and some other citrus trees that are proposed. Uh, the town arborist has reviewed the application, has acknowledged that the tree is neither dead nor dangerous nor in substantial declining health, uh, but does occur with the advocates' project arborist report that the other alternative location that I was just previously describing is less suitable due to its, um, close proximity to other heritage trees, again, and oak and another cedar tree. Uh, the staff report does note a recommendation of approval with the replanting plan that I just described, and a condition that recommends an additional oak tree replanted of forty-eight inch size to help mitigate the, um, loss of the cedar tree, should it be approved for removal. Having to answer any questions, that the commission may have.
So does that mean three forty-eight inch oak trees?
Correct, as recommended by staff.
Just wanted to make sure it's clear.
Yes, three total forty-eight inch box trees in addition to the other species noted.
I have a question. Um, so the, uh, there were two locations potential. One was up front and one was towards the middle. What, did you look at the option of taking a backseat around? Um, and, and then doing it back there? There, there is, and so when I went out to the site, I, I, um, I was, I was a little bit confused by the two fences that are, uh, you know, where is the final fence gonna be? It's gonna be, uh, there's, there's like a eight-foot section or six-foot section beyond the, the wooden fence now that is all very fitted. So where's the power, where's the box gonna be?
So the box would be located in the front of the property where they're wanting to move the tree, or a hundred and fifteen feet back. That's where the alternative box location would be.
Right.
The third, I mean, at the, at the end of the driveway, that wasn't considered as a location.
No, I was talking about, uh, on the, on the.
No, I was talking about, about, on the, the reason, the reason I'm asking is, the reason the back location was not chosen was because it would be too close to the oak and the cedar.
Yes.
Right? If that back cedar were to be moved, would that give enough room to, rather than the front cedar, with the back cedar, that would create more space between the oak tree and the first cedar line?
I think it would still be too close to the oak tree. It's a pretty big box. I mean, the applicant can speak on it, but it would be too compromising for, for the oak tree.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that that was, that was, is the oak tree driving it more than the space between the oak tree and the, and the cedar tree?
The oak tree is driving this.
Okay, got it.
If there wasn't an oak tree there.
Yeah, okay. Now, I just want.
We would have had them required it to be in that second location.
All right, that's, I just wanted to understand that that was the thing driving it, not, not the space between the two. Okay, cool. All right, any, any questions?
Just for Sally. You're satisfied with the selection of the replacement trees and the variety that they have there listed?
Yeah, so, and the reason why so many are listed is because of previous tree removals, so that's why I wanted to add yet another oak tree of forty-eight inches, just so it was clear that most of these are for previous removals, but we, we would like another tree for this one.
Okay, so, we're talking about nothing to do with this application, but other trees that were taken off the property as part of the redo of the.
Yeah, when they first entered the construction.
Okay, cool. All right, any other questions? All right, good, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and then we'll start with the applicant or their representative.
Hi, my name is Tim Chappone, the architect of the project, and this is unusual, we don't talk about tree removal for a gas meter, but it is the condition of which the P G and E had brought up that the gas meter, they give two locations, one which is three feet off the property line in front, and one was a hundred and fifteen feet back. The meter is substantial. If we put it in the back of the property, I mean, rather than the cedar, the oak and the redwood, it requires, size of it is, is big, it requires ballers, it's going to have a pad, it's just, it's a sight leavemanship, but you're doing more fencing and all these things that kind of just compounds the issue that, so the concern is it was going to be more invasive overall in the whole project. So, that's why we were looking at trying to get rid of the front tree. As you can see, it's even, it's not even exceptionally close to where we're putting it, but it is, again, it's just the amount of trenching required just with this.
So, it's the pathway to the box that's the issue?
It's, it's, it's what has to protect it. Here, we're using kind of a, using the wall at the front of the property as a way to protect it from, because technically then if it's exposed, just in land, it has, because by a driveway, it'll have to fall. Here, we're using kind of walls that are going in already as a way to protect it, so it's.
All right, got it.
It just kind of, you know how.
Right.
So, yes, we didn't want, and there's a huge redwood over there too, which is a little bit, so, and we understand the recommendation through the way it's alley and all that.
All right. All right, any questions? All right, all right, thank you. Anyone else here speaking on the item? Yeah, once I was comfortable with the fact that there was, that the second spot was, was going to create a problem, so I'm, I'm fine with it. So, I just think like, I'd rather have the back tree gone than the front tree, but I get the fact that it starts a construction project. Yeah, okay. Take a slide, folks. All right, so, we need motion. I hope that the planning commission filed that the proposed removal, one heritage cedar tree, number two, at one sixty-eight Alena Avenue in Baton would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report and that the commission approve tree removal subject to the conditions as listed in the draft heritage tree removal certificate. All right, I need a second.
Second.
Move the second, all those, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, not, passes, four zero. Okay, for those of you, all right, thank you. We did remove item four C, just want to double check, I can look around, but for the record, I'll ask, is there anyone here to speak on the original item four C that was removed from the agenda? All right, so, we'll go ahead with item four D, and this is the appeal, construction time limit to Adam Way and request the appeal on the building, on building office. So, we'll go ahead with the staff reports. Thank you, Sally.
Thank you. So, the request before you tonight is an appeal that was submitted relative to the construction time limit penalty, a property at two Adam Way that had new development and has since been finalized. A bit of background on what the construction time limit penalty is, there's an ordinance within the Baton Rouge Municipal Code that establishes time limits for building construction and renovation. It limits construction based on how large a home is to be no longer than thirty-six months if the size of that home exceeds four thousand square feet. The ordinance further specifies the amount of penalty, monetary penalty, I should say, based on the time that the project remains incomplete or not final on construction beyond the three years from the date the permit was initially issued. The project at two Adam Way was issued a building permit January sixth, two thousand sixteen for a new residence slightly under eleven thousand square feet. The corresponding time limit would have had the project required to be completed by January sixth, two thousand nineteen this year. So, the project was finalized by our building department on April twenty-sixth of this year. The applicant at the time of original permit issuance, as all permits are required to, did sign an acknowledgement of the construction time limit that I just described. The applicants are also notified when the deadline is approaching, about thirty days prior to when that time is going to be coming up, and a heads up that it's happening to avoid the project may issue a stop work order by our building department if they know that they wouldn't be able to complete within thirty days. Deposit is required to be submitted to the town in the amount of thirty thousand dollars and that was done on January tenth, two thousand nineteen. So, within ten days of when the permit was supposed to be completed based on the construction time limit requirements. So, at the end of the day, timing wise, the application, or I should say, the, the construction project was one hundred and eight days beyond the deadline date. That resulted in a penalty of twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. Following such, the applicant did submit the appeal again before you tonight with a series of bases, noting circumstances that were out of the sight of their control that delayed the completion of the project within the timeframes that the town otherwise requires. In summary, those circumstances, and they're noted in sufficient detail within the staff report, that in, and in summary topic, they noted unusual rainy winters both in twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen, job delays from their subcontractors, some leakage and mold caused by improper construction installation combined with the every infrequent rains that I just noted, as well as significant delays that they incurred with P G and E. The building official has reviewed the information submitted by the property owners and prepared an opinion for each topic or basis that I just noted, and those opinions are specified within the staff report and based on his professional opinion found that those circumstances were not unusual or outside of the property owner's control, unlike other similar projects that have been under construction within the town. Specifically to paint an overview or a bigger picture context of the construction time limit, since the ordinance was adopted in two thousand six, several projects have exceeded those time limits and paid the penalty. Of those, there were a total of seventeen that exceeded the construction time limit again since the year two thousand and six. And of those seventeen, two submitted appeals to the planning commission, both were denied based on their reasonings. One appealed to the city council of those two, that was also denied. And a third project, which was the only project of those total seventeen, that was granted an extension request due to weather and site conditions, assert the, the date was adjusted by three months from the time that that particular permit was traditionally issued. Based on the opinion of our building official, the majority of projects of similar size to, the complexity to this particular project were able to complete work within their associated three-year timeframes. He has also noted that larger developments, those greater than fifteen thousand square feet, may take additional time to complete the work and that this did not fall within the realm of that scope. So, based on the reasons as noted in the staff.
I'll get, get the pound my hand, okay? All right, I'll go ahead and bring the planning commission up for tonight, come, come to order. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Caroline.
Here.
Commissioner.
Got the turn of the power, right?
Commissioner Tanelli has notified us he will be late to the meeting. Commissioner Sokol is excused. Commissioner Lamb.
Here.
Commissioner Marner.
Here.
And you, you got me too, right? Okay. All right, good. Then the, the next item, item number two, so I think I'll do this, I think I'll do this two ways. Item number two would normally be for items that aren't on the agenda, aren't just on the agenda, and what we do with that is sometimes somebody will bring up an issue that we need to know about, sometimes it's just something to work on going forward, other times it's just to inform us about what a great job we're doing. That happens regularly, doesn't it? And then, and so it ends up being a sort of an open spot on the agenda to bring up items that we haven't heard about or maybe need to hear more about. So, if there's, is there anybody here to talk on, on item four C on the. Parking process? Okay, good. So, if anybody comes on that, I'll open up the public hearing for their comments and whenever, whenever they come in.
So, if I may explain, so everybody understands, that item came to my office just today and we realized that the way it's agenda is, it, that's a conditional use permit for three years and that is not something where, as I tell from the law, conditional use permit runs with the management forever and it may have annual review, but that's it. So, it's not properly agenda. We spoke with the applicant, we are pulling the matter entirely from the agenda, so I would say if anybody wants to speak on it, they're here anyway, they can do so either in the beginning or the end for items not on the agenda.
Okay, I'll do that one. All right, that's good.
If it were to come back to a conditional use permit with a full parent tax.
All right, great. So, so if anyone shows up tonight to speak on the item, we'll find a way for them to speak so they get to say what they were thinking.
Sure.
And then, and then if there's any questions about what the next steps are, they can check with the.
Three years.
Yes, all right, good. All right, nothing, so there's nothing on item two in public comments, things not on the agenda? Okay, then I'll go ahead and open and close the public comment section. And now we have the approval amendments for May twenty-second. I didn't see anything, so I'll move.
I did.
Yeah. Move the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, and if anyone's typing on that for me too. All right, the next item is the, all the public hearing items, let us explain how the process works for those of you who haven't been part of the process before. What we do is we kick off every item individually with an overview from staff and they'll give us the overview of the discussion and the process and some of the things that are in our report. And then we'll have questions and clarifications from commissioners as required, and we'll open up the public comment section and the applicant will speak first and anyone else who wants to speak on the item, and we'll close the public comment section and we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. And that, we'll do that on every, every time. Anyone else comes in the meeting during the process of it, I'll explain the process one more time so nobody gets, you know, sort of doesn't know what we're trying to accomplish. Right, so, with that, we, we'll go ahead and start with item four A on the school master plan for Menlo School.
My major.
Yes.
And I do have potential conflict with regards to Menlo, Madonna, we're just in there at the fall. We've looked at it as a conflict issue, decided just to be by any caution that I'm not needing any legal advice or just being in matters related to the school, however, since this is accepting information only and I am a part of that, if I do perform a meeting, I just want to figure it out.
Okay. Okay. And one, one more clarification, as long as you're playing lawyer for a minute, should I go, should we go ahead and, and then move item four C before I dive into four A on the, on the agenda?
Sure.
Can we take action on that?
Yes.
All right, so let's, let's go ahead on item, skip to item four C for a minute and I need a motion to remove it from the agenda.
I want a motion to remove it from the agenda.
Move the seconded, all right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you, and we'll bring it back as appropriate or not, depending on what happens next. All right, so I'll go back to item four A again, we'll go over the school master plan, and we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, Chair.
Hey, why don't you mark a line?
Wrong.
Oh, wrong, all right, good.
So, before you tonight, the annual update for two thousand nineteen for Menlo School, our municipal code does require annual updates of every private school within town's master plan. Menlo School has submitted such plan, includes all required details in terms of topics and contents of conversation that master plans are required to address, including land use, circulation and parking, enrollment, any facilities that the particular school may be foreshadowing to begin construction or process of construction for within the current year, information on heritage trees and other hours, logistical hours of operation, in operation of the facility itself. The master plan submitted for Menlo School does speak to each of these topics in terms of potential facility upgrades. The Carton Athletic Complex still identified as potential project, but currently noted to be on hold pending revisions to address both neighbor and environmental concerns. The transportation component, or circulation component, I should say, of the plan also has been included. The school does include the continuing evaluation on how best to serve the housing needs of its faculty. Now, no specific development project has been submitted, however, a site has been reserved or spotted as potential on their master plan map that could potentially house staffing in the future. As it relates to the required transportation demand management program that every private school except for Menlo College within town is required to have T D M or how the schools intend to reduce the amount of vehicle trips generated by their facility, a summary has been submitted on their T D M program and that summary that is included in detail within the staff report has identified that the transportation demand management measures that Menlo School is implementing is found to be working successfully. This town has not received any complaints regarding such activity on the school, which helps to substantiate that professional opinion letter. In terms of enrollment, the master plan does note that the school's current enrollment is well under their maximum allowable for the original conditional approvals. And then lastly, as it relates to neighborhood outreach, Menlo School does hold an annual neighborhood meeting to bring in those neighboring residences to discuss any issues of concern. That meeting was held in May of this year. There was four neighbors that attended and the applicant has stated that all the responses from those neighbors were positive. And with that said, staff is recommending that the planning commission accept the two thousand nineteen master plan update from Menlo School. I know that the applicant is here and the commissioner would be happy to answer any specific questions that the commission may have.
Any questions to staff before we start? Any questions to staff? All right, and I'll go ahead and open the public, public comment section and Mr. Tanelli's here, just in time to hear, hear, hear what we needed to do here, just in time for voting. All right.
All right, my name is Lauren Arns, I'm the director of operations at Menlo School. I just hear one, you're a, second, you're a.
Great, and is that, is it his mic on or is it just need to be pointed better out? They should be on. There you go, I just want to, I just want to make sure that, that you're.
How much?
I would share your personal to your office.
Should be better?
Yeah, mine should hold, yeah, yeah, that's good.
Again, my name is Lauren Arns, I'm the director of operations at Menlo School. This is my second year, I'm gonna do, I want to thank you for having us here, it's certainly a pleasure to be here. I want to thank just the town of Atherton in general, and their incredible partnership with the school, their support of what we do, what we try to do. I know Sally, I don't really know the rest of you yet, but Sally has helped us out on a number of issues. With me is Stan Healy, our head of school, and I'll, I'll make some rather brief comments, and we're here, of course, to answer any questions, provide any input. First comments are regarding land use. We're, we're well along in our master plan, particularly in terms of academic facilities and various buildings and such that support those. We are currently, well, I'll take you through, right, we basically have rebuilt more or less the campus since two thousand. We started with the middle school, then we completed the upper school about two thousand and three. We added a brand new athletic center, and then our creative arts and design center building. When I first arrived at the school, we were just completing rather major significant improvements to St. Paul. And we have just this one broken ground on our performing arts center. That performing arts center is due to be opened for the start of school in, basically, August, two thousand and twenty. We remain well below the forty percent limit on buildings on top of, you know, covering the land service, as reported in the dates, we're actually still under twenty-five percent. The future plans do stem around trying to make improvements to Carton Field. If you've been around for a while, you know, we've run through various attempts at that, but so far unsuccessful. It's a bit challenging with the neighbors and probably also with our college partner. And then, maybe the biggest issue for us is affordability of housing for teachers. And we do, you know, as mentioned in here, we do a own apartment complex in Menlo Park, you know, six apartments that teachers, are for teachers. Generally, try to help teachers in a way to become acclimated to the area and possible price pressures that come with the area. And we are actively trying to consider how we might improve that position even back to take care of our teachers and to continue to attract, you know, best teachers as possible. We, as stated, traffic demand management program remains very, very active. You may know we have four buses that run in the morning, run service morning and night. We have been reading up on our, on our numbers a little bit, we're still well under thresholds, but it's something that we're monitoring and trying to make sure that we're stable of. We've just entered into a agreement that will give us a new bus every new, every year for the next four years. That in some ways make the bus hopefully more attractive. And, and we run shuttles to and from the train station, both morning and evening. We offer incentives to our employees for taking public transportation. We have vehicles on site that allow employees to run errands during the day if they use public transportation. So there's a number of various elements. Parking remains the same, I think it's unchanged from a year ago. Generally, that's probably as much as anything, the land use issue, parking probably takes up about the full space that we have. And as stated, we got our neighborhood outreach in May, it's typically every year in May. I think there were five people this year, I think it's the same as last year, we're five. We need broadcasting, we try to get more people to come, but the comments are overwhelmingly positive. We do believe, I'm fortunate, you know, I've been here a couple of years, but it seems that we've really developed quite a positive relationship with our neighbors. They reach out to me regularly, you know, generally good. But a number of our neighbors are very local, and let us know how we're doing, and what they appreciate, and in some cases, what they don't. So with that, all in forward comments.
Any other questions? This is so much better report than we used to get, and if you collect the minutes of your neighborhood meetings from five, maybe four or five years ago, you, you wouldn't be happy with those meetings, so it's much better now. Are you thinking about doing some apartments or something on the property since it's so low density, or what do you think?
We're definitely exploring doing apartments. Actually.
Right, exactly, it sounds like that would be the density of these, which might help us on some other issues at the end, if traffic access is.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time on it this year, you know, more explore it toward, not really in concrete, you know, where we've, we've focused, as you might imagine, on generating funds for the performing arts center. It's about a forty million dollar building, so there's a significant, we need significant contributions for that. But as part of that, you know, what's next, what's next, of course, we're always thinking about what's next. We have started to spend more and more time talking about the faculty housing. It probably is really the issue, you know, that all schools in the big areas.
You know, that might actually go for traffic, if you wish to.
It might, it's pretty attractive to me to be able to walk up my door and have a job. If that were offered, you know, would you?
Just had a question about enrollment at seven ninety-five, and if you, Menlo's been at or near enrollment?
I think we've been at seven ninety-five for year after year, four or five years.
So I'm wondering how the school feels about that, if you're comfortable with that, or if there are any discussions that there would be a request to increase that down the road?
You know, maybe Stan.
Yeah, because I, I hope you're getting cramped, or you're looking to expand. I would raise the opportunity.
I'm sorry?
We would, we would raise the opportunity to grow in size. We had five applications for every, every opening in the school, both for the school three times over, the kids were, that's for us. Said no, and offered a lot of completely new ones, and I, I think we could take on, take on a hundred kids, but we could take on sixteen, thirty kids pretty easily with our, with our classroom size. We do look forward to that, we just haven't, we haven't felt like that has been anything that's for the town of Warren. But if we're here, we can be excited.
Was just curious as to the feelings of the school now that you're at that upper level, so.
Yeah, hopefully, Stan doesn't mind you sharing later, I think the applicants was, you know, a record for this past year, so. Hopefully, you know, we think we produce a great product, and we have sharp, bright, wonderful, you know, kids that, you know, go on and contribute to society in a number of ways. Stan said, you know, we're at our limit every year, and we're doing the best of the best that we can, but there's, there's more demand than supply.
Appreciate the effort on the traffic management, that's for sure, and that, you know, not just this year, but year to year to year. And looking at the numbers now, you're about five percent under the AM maximum, to ten percent under the PM maximum. And I think that five percent buffer is probably a pretty good spot.
Yeah, I think that some of the things you continue to doing is just keep on working, you know, the relationship with the neighbors, because I think that, anything in terms of changes in numbers of students or whatever like that, would, would be highly dependent on that and the traffic. Those two things would be very critical. Also, resolving whatever's gonna happen on the field, so that everybody can just be comfortable with what's gonna happen, rather than always worry about what's gonna happen. So getting those three things aligned could, could open up other doors. All right, any other, any other comments, questions? All right. Did he, did he earn his money already?
Those are easy. Any business cards, anybody?
All right, I'll leave over here, I won't get hurt. All right, and any, also, anyone else to speak on this item? For those of you who just came in, we're on item four A, the, the, the school plan. All right, then I'll go ahead and close the public session, the public hearing, and bring you back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. Your report, yeah, it's fine, your report, and, and, and I, there was another school in the area that wasn't doing anywhere near as good a job on these reports. I refer them to your report as a sample, so, so that was, that was, once again, you've set the standard for improving the process dramatically over the last few years, and it shows, it just shows every year. All right, I need a motion?
I'll move. I move that the planning commission accept for filing the two thousand and nineteen annual master plan update and TDM monitoring report for Menlo School.
All of, all right, move the second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, passes for zero. All right, and, thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Thanks for keeping things well managed. All right, item four B is, for those of you that just came in, the process we're using is the same on every item. We get, we get a staff update that gives us the overview of the, of the item, and then we, the commission would ask any questions or clarifications, then we would open up a public comment, and then the applicant would go first, any.